We got six o'clock. Looks like, looks like we've got six o'clock, so we'll come to order for the May the eighth meeting of the Patrick County Board of Supervisors at 6:00 PM. And I guess we'll have a vacation by Mr. Smith Turner, Pleasant U Baptist Church.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for the freedom and the privilege to be here, and I just ask that you bless our communities and that you give them prosperity. I ask that you protect our members of the service of law enforcement, of first responders, and I just ask that you give wisdom and discernment over our local leadership as they address the issues before them this evening. Amen.
Thank you, Smith. Mr. Perry, would you lead the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, on the nation, on the God, in the people, every being, and everyone.
We'll have a moment of silence in recognition of the U.S. military serving here and abroad and our public safety. You see it? First thing on the, under regulations is the approval of the meeting agenda. Do we have any, any changes to it? Do you have anything to him?
Yes, sir.
I got a couple I'd like to change to where we can have a discussion in closed session about policy and personnel. All right. There's nothing else. Accept a motion.
I'll make that motion.
You got a motion? Need a second?
Second.
Got a second? Call for vote.
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
I'm wrong. Perry?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. And we need approval of the meeting minutes for April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Second. Call for vote?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye also. The next one is approval of bills, claims, and appropriations. Do we have any questions on that? No questions. I'll accept a motion.
Is... I'll make the motion. Will you approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Call for vote?
Aye.
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 And I.
And I vote aye also. We got that down, so next thing is a public hearing on the six-year highway plan. Twenty, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, and then twenty twenty-eight to twenty twenty-nine. Proposed construction budget, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. The Virginia Department of Transportation and the Board of Supervisor of Patrick County, in accordance with Section thirty-three point two dash three-three-one of the Code of Virginia, will conduct a joint public hearing on the third floor of the Veterans Memorial Building, located in Stewart, Virginia, at six thirty PM on Monday, May the eighth, twenty twenty-three. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed secondary six-year plan for physical years twenty-three and twenty-four through twenty-eight and twenty-nine in Patrick County, and the secondary system construction budget for physical year twenty-two and twenty-three. Copies of the proposed plan and budget may be viewed at Martinville Residence, resident office of the Virginia Department of Transportation, located at Weepinwilli Lane in Bassett, Virginia, or the Office of the Patrick County Administration. Our projects in this secondary six-year plan are eligible for federal funds, will be included in the statewide transportation improvement program, which documents how Virginia will obligate federal transportation funds. I think it's all I need to read, and it ain't quite six thirty. Is that okay to go over here with the meeting? Okay. All right. Go ahead then.
At the time, I can ask anybody at the time.
All right. I, if you can arrange them.
I call your name, like to speak behalf of the, oh, regarding the six-year plan, um, I've got your, I divorce, um, ever, like to speak the death. Good evening. My name is Dolores Lee, and my husband and I, Timothy, reside at twenty-sixty-one Handy Mountain Drive, Waldville, and that is in the Dan River District. First, I'd like to say thank you for your consideration and for your approval of the eight tenths of a mile of Handy Mountain Drive that is scheduled for pavement this summer. However, I stand before you tonight to ask for your consideration and approval of an additional one point three tenths miles for pavement. I understand the one point three tenths miles cannot be paved with the scheduled eight tenths mile this summer, but I do ask that you consider the additional pavement at the county's earliest convenience. If any of you travel to Handy Mountain Drive, and you are aware of where the scheduled pavement is in, you will be able to see a drop-off fifty yards from where they're going to stop paving. Go another hundred yards, and there is another drop-off off the road. After each heavy rain, the drop-offs are becoming larger and larger. The ruts in the road are horrible, and unfortunately, VDOT workers have to come without the road their best as they can. If the road was paved, this would eliminate VDOT from having to continue to scrape the road and fill the holes in the road, especially after a heavy rain. The two hundred and thirty acres of land that my husband and I live on has been in his family nineteen oh four. That's a hundred and nineteen years in one family. Our daughters and their family will make five generations that have had ownership of this land. We don't plan to go anywhere anytime soon. Our land was recognized as a tenured century farm by the former governor Tim King's administration in two thousand and six. Our family is not the only family that would be impacted by the paving of the road. There are additional seven other families that would benefit from this. Therefore, I am asking you to please consider the additional pavement of Handy Mountain Drive as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's all of it.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Is anybody else? Okay. I'll just, um, just wrap that up, and I appreciate Ms., uh... Ms. East's comments, and she was right. What we plan to do this year, it's eight tenths of a mile of Handy Mountain Road, the opposite end from what we did a few years ago, and we also plan to pave Fish Farm Road. So we've got two projects scheduled to do. And what we'll do is, is see, kind of look at her request and see what we can add to the six-year plan. And I'll get back to you.
All right. Good.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Lisa. I guess the next thing is a public hearing on the budget, so we'll open that. Okay. Got to hit them, I said, then. Okay. Motion to close the discussion on the six-year plan.
I don't know.
Did it run?
Uh, I don't know if need a motion. Just got to...
Okay. We'll just close it then, discussion on the six-year plan, VDOT. And we'll open the one public hearing of the budget. See if I can find the papers. I don't see, I don't see anybody that signed up to speak on the budget, is it? Is anybody? Okay. You want to go ahead? Did you sign up on it? Here. Okay. We got the topic, topic on it is the library, but that'll work. Okay. Library. Yeah.
Thank you for giving me some time tonight. I appreciate that. I'm Rick Ward, obviously, with the Blue Ridge Regional Library, the director of the library, and also happen to live in the Peters Creek District, so I do live in Patrick County. I wanted to make this quick because I know you've got a lot of new agenda tonight, and I just wanted to point out a few things that really concern me. Back in two thousand eighteen nineteen, fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen, we were increased to two eighty seventy, seven eighty-two. In nineteen twenty, we continued to get two eighty, seven eighty-two. The minimum wage in May first of two thousand twenty-one went to nine fifty, and we also got two eighty, seven eighty-two. January the first of two thousand twenty-two, the minimum wage increased to eleven dollars an hour, and we received two eighty, seven eighty-two. This past January, the minimum wage went to twelve dollars an hour, and we received the two eighty, eight eighty, seven eighty-two. But fortunately, we were able to get the bonus through the help of the schools, and I appreciate that, but that still left us about short about three thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars, which is what I asked for, to give our staff a five percent raise. We've had to cover that increase in the minimum wage. It's causing salary compression. We've got people working in the libraries now who are, have been there for many years, and then we've got people who've been there maybe a year or two, and they're making almost as much as that person who's been there for a long period of time. Inflation has increased. Supplies and fuel have gone up, and as we're all feeling the crunch, and we do too at the library, I noticed that the Patrick County employees received about a five to six percent raise this year, well deserved, I know, and they'll be receiving another one this coming fiscal year. But eventually, in our situation, this will have, it will come to a breaking point where we won't be able to afford to do the same services that we're doing now for the money we have. We don't want to lose staff. We don't want to lose good employees that have been there a long time, but when they can go to Walmart and make more money down there than they can at the library, I have a problem with that. And it eventually will cause us to have to cut some services, reduce hours at the branch, possibly reduce stops for the bookmobile, which could include the schools, which would be a last resort as far as I'm concerned, because I think that's very important. And obviously, we don't want to have to do any of this, but we can only do so much with the funding we're receiving now. And that's basically all I had tonight. I thought we only had about fifteen minutes to talk, so I wanted to make it quick. And I want to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them now, or I'll be glad to come back whenever you...
Any question? No question. Like ain't no questions, so we'll, we haven't completed the budget yet, so we'll take it in consideration.
Well, I, I requested the thirteen one forty two budget this year, just to cover the...
Okay. I tell you very much. I tell you, I tell you one thing I will say. It jumps out at me a lot of times, the light bill y'all've got out there, like seventeen hundred dollars a month. Is it any way it could conserve any electricity?
Well, what we've done at a few of the other branches was we had everything converted to LED light, and since county owns that building, then the cost would have to be incurred by the county, but there's a ton of tube lights, and, I mean, if you come in and look, you know, they're similar to this, and if you replaced it all, we did it in Bassett and Martinsville, and it saved us quite a bit of money on our electric, just changing the light.
If you could do something like that, that would really help, because I think it was like seventeen hundred and forty-nine dollars this month.
Yeah. So, like I say, this building was built in ninety-one, and back then, they weren't thinking about energy efficiency, so they put in a lot of light, and that's, because I've commented and talked to Gary about it numerous times. If we, and it wouldn't take near as many light bulbs with LED, because they're so much brighter than the other ones. I mean, we were able to eliminate fixtures in some of the places that we put it with other buildings, but that would be the biggest suggestion I can make as far as that is concerned. Outside lighting, I don't know if those bulbs are LED or not, but we need it for the security of the staff and patrons, especially in the winter time when it gets darker and we're open to light.
So that'd be something we look at then on the bulbs.
Yeah. So, it's like I say, there's a lot of light bulbs, so...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all.
Is it, did anybody else have any, any comments on the budget?
Greg. Greg.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Greg Preston, Executive Director with Piedmont Community Services. The last time I was here in March, we had a discussion about many of our services here in, in Patrick County. Wanted to return today to give an update. One of the questionable services that we had was prevention. So, Ms. Regina Clark is with, with me this evening, as well as Ms. Jane Carlson, our board, one of our board chairs. Wanted to give an update on our prevention services, if we may.
Good evening. It's be, good to be here with you again. Did want to just highlight some of the things that we have been busy doing this school year. One of the number one things is focus on our students and our youth, and we have a wonderful partnership with Patrick County Public Schools, and I'm excited to say that we were, for the first time ever, able to implement the Too Good For Drugs program, and that is in partnership again with the school system. So every elementary school, all the sixth graders received a program. It's an evidence-based program, talking about communication schools, communication skills, peer pressure refusal skills, and some substance use drug prevention education. Then in the high school, we were able to target messages about vaping prevention, opioid prevention, and mental health and signs of suicide. So every sixth, eighth, and ninth grader received some sort of prevention effort in the school system this academic year. That is three hundred and fifty-nine students that received that this year, and again, thank you to the school system for that partnership and the opportunity to do that. We've also been providing several in-service trainings for the school system, some trainings on suicide prevention for the teachers to help, help them identify signs that they may see in the youth and even others. That is our school-based prevention efforts. On the community prevention side, we've did a Patrick County Resource Fair back in the fall. We partnered with the Patrick County Sheriff's Office for the Shred, Tread, and Meds Event, and we were able to be here in partnership with the sheriff's office to give out Detera Bags and lock boxes. So we were really thankful to have a prevention staff on site for that. We have given out over a hundred Detera Bags and seventy-five lock boxes in the community. Those Detera Bags are deactivation kits, and it's a way for people to dispose of unwanted medications in a safe way. They don't dispose of them down into the water system. We've done quite a few promotional ads on various campaigns, including mental health awareness and suicide prevention, even focused featuring one of our very own Board of Supervisors, focusing on suicide prevention for first responders and veterans, lock and talk suicide prevention, over-the-counter medication safety, marijuana awareness, prescription drug take-back events, fentanyl awareness, which will be launching tomorrow, and then we're also currently working on problem gambling prevention campaign in the Ketchment area. We offer four different types of parenting programs. Three of them are virtual, and one will be in person, and that is anticipated to start this fall. For community trainings, we offer youth mental health first aid. We've had forty people trained in that this year, since July first of two thousand twenty-two. Adult mental health first aid, we've had twenty people trained. Safe Talk Suicide Prevention, we've had ninety-three people trained. Revive naloxone training, we, the person that was doing that for us retired. I'm happy to say we had to get three people to replace her, so we now have three prevention staff trained, and we have been able to offer that training this year, and it's already been offered with no interruption from our other services at Piedmont, from our other staff. And we also have an adverse childhood experiences training, and we had twenty-six people trained. We offer this throughout our Ketchment area, so those numbers are reflective of Patrick County residents who received that training. We have a regional opioid task force. They have been meeting by Zoom monthly. We've had eight meetings since September. We have the HERSA R Core Consortium. I spoke with you all about that before, when we were able to get that funding for the community. They have held five meetings since November. There is a community coalition that is launching tomorrow. This has been a long time in the works, and it is an expansion of the Engaging Patrick County Initiative that is happening, and we've got about thirty people who have RSVP to, to be there for that. And then one that I'm especially excited about is our CHIL Youth Task Force. That's communities helping improve local lives, and that's a group of high schoolers committed to making healthy, positive choices. So they will have their first training in June of this summer. So a lot's going on. We have two full-time staff. I joke that that's a two-hundred percent increase in what we had previously, so that is coming from our school-based staff and our community level staff. We were instrumental in getting five hundred thousand dollars brought into the county for that HERSA federal funding, and that is supporting a deputy for the sheriff's office. And then we've also had thirty-eight thousand dollars come from community coalitions in Virginia to address opioid prevention, and that's, that's some of the work that we're doing. Any questions?
The, tomorrow, the coalition. Hope I can be there, but I've got court at eleven, so I don't know if I can, but anyway, certainly have my support, and please, the only email I saw was one that was shared to me, so please, please, please push that out hot and heavy. Hit me up on Facebook, and I'll be glad to push that out, because that's very important, and all the work that's done is very important, so let's, can't give me enough information, so please dump it on me. So Bailey is awesome too, about getting stuff out in the paper, so please, please share.
Great.
Hope I can be there tomorrow, but...
Yeah, we appreciate your support. A lot of good stuff going on.
And it's a key, one of the twelve sectors, so we need those twelve sectors, so I would like to encourage everyone to please get involved in part of that, because that's, those numbers are needed, and I want to see a DFC in a couple of years.
That's my goal too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else on the budget? Any comments? If not, we'll close that hearing then. And the next thing we, next thing we had on the agenda was a public comment period. Let's see. Start with this one. Ed Poole, Blue Ridge Solar. Good, how are you? Good to see you again. Thank you. My name's Ed Poole. I wanted just to be very brief and present to you folks what's called the SDS Sheets, or the Safety Data Sheets for cabmium telluride. I think this is kind of important, the public presentation that Interjex gave a couple weeks ago. Dominica Sink, who was the presenter, tried to draw an analogy of this chemical to table salt. I thought that was terribly misleading to the public, very devious, actually. So, the very top of the sheet underneath the title, Safety Data Sheet, fourteen Feb twenty twenty revision. I'll draw your attention down to about the middle of the page where it says hazards identification. This chemical is considered hazardous by the twenty-twelve OSHA Hazard Communication Standard. At your leisure, you can go through this. You'll find the organs that are affected. It's a carcinogen. I have called Brian Thurman with the Virginia Emergency Management Department to ask him to work with myself and possibly your own emergency personnel to draw up a plan. I've talked with one of the fire chiefs here, should that an industrial utility light up, catch on fire. There is an evacuation zone that has to be set up, a half-mile minimum. I don't think this has been taken into account yet, so I just simply present this to you. That's really all I have for tonight. I told you I would continue to collect data about this over time, and that's what I'm trying to do. Are there any questions?
Any idea how long it takes for this stuff to break down? So obviously, so let's say I get a panel and stick it out in my yard. Obviously, this stuff isn't going to start leaching into the soil in the next day or two, but how long does it take for these to break down?
Are you talking the panel itself?
Or is some of these chemicals and, and...
Mr. Perry, honestly, I'd have to go to the book to look at that. The, the best test results that have been done in the world right now are done in Germany. They've been working with this for a very, very long time and doing long-term testing. A lot of the tests that you'll see on solar panels are, we'll call them accelerated tests, where they'll test them for eighteen hours and try to extrapolate that out across twenty or thirty years, but only the Germans have put together hard tests. They say they leach. I'm going to take their word for it, and I can try to go through the OSHA manuals to see if there's any more detail on that.
I haven't seen anything either, that's why I was asked.
Yeah. Understand.
You know what a DHS chemical is?
A, no, I don't. I'll have to look that up for you.
I'm just saying it says, U.S. Department of Homeland Security says its product does not contain any DHS chemical.
We'd be happy to come back to you with that. This thing's seven pages long. It goes through the quantity of grams, partial grams that you can inhale. It goes into the wildlife. It's very toxic to fish, I can tell you that. And I have a fellow that I work with out of OSHA that's with Fire Safety Corporation. I can have Jason give me some information and break all this down for you if you'd like. Would you like for me to do that? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we got Mr. Charles Vivier. Good to see you, Charles. Ain't seen you in a while. Blue Ridge voter registration changes.
There's, there's a purge going on in Patrick County voter registration. It may not be new. It certainly is not unique to me, but I know that at least twenty-five other people involved, and I got a letter dated April twenty-first from the Office of the Vote And I got a letter dated April 21st from the Office of the Voter Registration of Patrick County saying I don't live in Patrick County anymore, and I've been voting in Blue Ridge District for 35 years. Now, it took a little bit of getting to the bottom of this, so as I say, it's not unique to me. And the answer that I got, that it has to do with GIS information, geographical information systems, I think is what it stands for. Now, someone has initiated this activity, and I don't know yet, haven't got to the bottom of it, but I do have some names. One of them is with the Western Piedmont, David Rakes. I have his telephone number, 276-638-3987. Evidently, he has been able to gather some information on the coordinates of residences, okay? And pass this information on to the Virginia Department of Elections. And they see that some people don't live in the county that they say they live in. As I said, thoroughly surprised to me and my wife, but Gilda, but there's others. And so Susan Taylor, who is the General Registrar here in Patrick County, might be able to give you a listing. The, the information, so this information went to Virginia Department of Elections, and they have evidently passed this on to the locality, and then the locality is the one that sent out the letter. I got my letter from Susan. Well, this, this is, this is all affected by where they get their information on where the county line is, okay? So let's, let's go back to prior to 1960 or so. The, the county tax office, the Commissioner of the Revenue, using aerial photographs, which was the state of art at the time, had the county boundary plotted on that, along with, of course, all the properties. And they knew how to work out where you got taxed and who, what part was one county and what part was in another. When the county went to GIS mapping website, GIS, as I understand it from Teresa McCormick in the mapping department, county tax mapper, she said basically those photographs were sent to a firm, third party, and then they made the GIS maps that appear on our websites, okay? And there's different layers, some aerials, some just show the road, but they all show this county boundary. And so I have a feeling that Western Piedmont and others have looked at that, say, okay, this house is not in the county. In January 1963, the county line, at least between Carroll and Patrick, was resurveyed. Very few people living today know that. So I was down at the clerk's office today, and I got a lot of help from Ms. Morgan Booth at that office, and Stan Clement also responded to me, and he's with Fork Mountain Survey. And he said the plates, the survey plates are recorded in plaque book four, pages one to 14. And then there was an order possibly dated in June 1964, we still haven't received confirmation of that, where the two counties' boards of supervisors agreed, this is where the county line is. Take this half of that farm and take that half of that farm, et cetera. But as I say, the maps are not current, so I'm in the wrong county. Now, it's going to be a job to get back into the Blue Ridge. I've, I've got a letter from Carroll County, welcomed us with open arms, told us where we can vote. But their letter also gave me a website, which is elections.virginia.gov/register. Oh, I ignored that, but I thought I'd get into that, and let me tell you, senior citizens are not going to do well on that website. It's tough enough to go through the ballot sometime. I completed it, and I'm going to wait and see what happens. In the meantime, I would suggest that you want to follow up with your tax mapper, okay? And get reports back on progress of that department of getting the corrections to the county orders on those maps, because it turns out, or I'm suggesting that other agencies are using that map GIS information. So that's, that's step one. And I saw McCormick today, and I, I said, do you need any extra funding, any extra help? And she said, please, don't bring me into this, but she's into it, because I suggest that now that there's been a reversal, and the Commissioner of the Revenue is using her information. But as I said, it's, it's not a tax situation, and it's not a tax parcel situation. And believe me, I could take all the evidence down, and I'm getting personal about my situation again. I could say, hey, here's my tax ticket, doesn't count. Here's where my kids went, doesn't count, okay? There's, there's more concrete evidence, and no pun intended, but there is a concrete monument sitting in my yard with a disc on top. It's a survey monument, possibly from this June 1963 survey, I'm sure. And there's a line on it, one side says Carroll, and other side says Patrick, and on the Patrick side there sits my house. Now, how I'm going to get to vote in Patrick County, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm working.
If I may ask, what, what road do you live on?
It's Route 608, Pilot View Road.
Spotted.
Pilot.
Pilot View Road.
Uh, in Patrick County, it's Pilot View Drive. Go a mile down the road and get into Carroll County, it's Pilot View Road. So.
Well, Mr. Vivier, I'll say I would love to have you stay with us in Patrick County, especially in Blue Ridge.
Well, you may wind up with a committee to study this. Please don't.
Come on now.
That sounds like a volunteer to me.
Thank you, Charles. Looks like the next one is Mr. Jim Best, Meadows of Dan Solar.
I appreciate the chance to speak. I'm trying to keep up with the misinformation. It's, I think, the second time I've spoken about this here, as well as the Planning Commission several times. Misinformation about the Fairystone Solar parent Enerjex Renewables presented by the Enerjex staff. Karen Drozniak, the Global Sustainability Director of First Solar, who makes the panels, presented a letter in the Martinsville Bulletin, the 27th of, 7th of April. She presented, which I put in quotes, "evidence" with absolute statements implying no further investigation or questions are warranted about cadmium telluride solar panels produced by First Solar, which is the primary provider in the United States. So I've tried to cobble together a cursory comparison of cadmium telluride studies, including the T-Clipped results, which was cited in her letter to the editor. The facts are, however, that T-Clipped results, as well as those of other government agencies, vary greatly in their results, from acceptable zero to 900% above safety levels. The same government agency, same label. They chose one. Variables include the age of landfills, the pH of landfills, the time and duration of testing, which Ed mentioned just a minute ago, for leaching cadmium telluride in the semiconductor films of photovoltaic panels. Likewise, Dominica Sink at the public event held down the street at the college, talked about the studies, and she quoted an off, a number. Forty studies clear the use of cadmium telluride is safe in all conditions. Well, if you've done any scientific work, you know that the word "all" is a very dangerous statement, especially when the studies were paid for by the company that is trying to promote the panels, First Solar. She did not include the fact that about half of these studies are meta-analysis. That's a term for studies which do not involve original research. They simply summarize the results of others, other studies. And these other studies were done all over the world. They were both foreign and domestic studies that had different parameters, and so basically it's comparing apples and oranges to talk about these studies. And to say that they all four, all 40 of them came to the same result is quite a wash. She didn't mention the fact that First Solar funded these studies, and I don't have time to review all the absolute statements, but I'd like to focus on leaching studies momentarily here, all related to the compound cadmium telluride used in solar panels. And I'm going to quote from Vanderbilt, Vanderbilt University study. Acute inhalation exposure, and this is not about cadmium separately, it's about the compound cadmium telluride. These fumes can cause metal fume fever with flu-like symptoms of weakness, fever, headaches, chills, nausea, vomiting, dizziness, sweating, muscular pain, coughing, and difficulty breathing, acute pulmonary edema, may develop within 24 hours and reaches a maximum in three days. The first chronic effect of exposure to cadmium in this compound is generally kidney damage manifested by excretion of excessive protein in the urine, followed by anemia, teeth discoloration, and loss of smell. Cadmium, again, in these panels, also is believed to cause pulmonary emphysema and bone disease. Ed mentioned the carcinogenic effect. Other studies by the NIH and OSHA repeat many of the exact same precautions. Acute toxicity, acute aquatic toxicity, chronic aquatic toxicity, harmful if swallowed, harmful to the skin, carcinogenicity, reported to be carcinogenic. Chronic exposure to cadmium telluride, it causes lung and prostate cancer. I'm going to skip to the end of this documentation. This is from the National Library of Medicine, the National Center for Biotechnology Information from the NIH. They have three graphs. I'm going to discuss the blurb under each one. Leaching of soluble cadmium tellurides from solar panels. Two continuous flow columns, as they had one column, another column, and they flushed the columns with a fluid. Now, the mixture in the thin film crushed glass solar panels were run in parallel to investigate the impact of two simulated landfill conditions on the potential release of soluble cadmium and telluride from the cadmium telluride semiconductor film into the environment. This relates to your question. Initial period of the anaerobic and the acidic columns were compared, respective to their relevance to landfills. In figure number two, they showed the concentration of cadmium and telluride, because they separate in the affluent from the columns. In the acidic column, the concentrations increased during the first 10 days, reaching a maximum level of 3.23 milligrams per liter for cadmium and 1.10 milligrams per liter for telluride respectively. At this point, that's 10 days, at this point of time, 47.7% and 12.6% of the total cadmium telluride contained in the solar panels had been released through the effluvia, respectively. That is almost 50% for the cadmium, almost 13% for the telluride. The concentration of cadmium in the affluent was found to be above the threshold limit established by the T-Clipped standard for the metal approximately 50% of the full operational time. The concentration of both cadmium and telluride in the affluent when decreased, then decreased over the remainder of the experiment. And figure three shows the cumulative release of cadmium and telluride in the acidic column over the course of 30 days. 73% of the cadmium and 21% of the telluride were released. So I don't want to blur your auditory memory with any more numbers. As Ed mentioned, there are international studies ongoing, and for us to assume that all of anything can be summarized in a, in a simple, absolute statement by the company who provides the panels raises serious concerns. Thank you very much.
Do we have anybody else that wants to speak? Not, we'll close public comment. Think we got nothing on the new business, old business. We don't want to get into that one. You want to? You want to do that one?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, under old business, you have two items, discussion to amend and reenact the solar ordinance, and a consideration to amend the comprehensive plan. I'm, I'd like to address both of those at the same time. They both deal with the same topic. As you know, you had adopted a solar ordinance previously. With regards to that particular solar ordinance, there was a, they would say tactical decision made on my part, frankly, to allow the ordinance to be adopted as it was presented, given extreme amount of effort that it put into it prior to our appointment as county attorney. And so, and because of the fact that there was an understanding, there was a solar facility on the cusp of submitting an application, I felt it was important to go ahead and have something in place, whether it was legally sufficient or not, to at least have a stopgap measure, to have the ability to have a discussion with that solar organization. As it turns out, the imminent threat of an application wasn't as imminent as, as I had understood it to be, but nevertheless, the ordinance, as it was adopted, was adopted pursuant to a code section of the Code of Virginia that specifically speaks to regulating solar facilities based on a zoning ordinance. Patrick County does not have zoning, so therefore it is not applicable in this particular instance. However, having said that, there is an alternative means of determining where solar facilities or whether solar facilities can be cited in the county. Do not have zoning, there's the option of also considering it based on whether or not it complies with comprehensive plan. So the recommendation that we have for you today, and we're hoping that you set a public hearing for both of these items, is that you make a specific amendment to your comprehensive plan to specifically reference solar facilities. That's. That specifically sets forth the, kind of the general broad concepts that the county is looking for as it relates to solar facilities in terms of, you know, protecting the environment, the view shed, those types of things. And that, as part of the comprehensive plan analysis, any applicant needs to comply with policy that is adopted by the board supervisors. The Planning Commission has recommended that that policy be adopted in ordinance format. Doesn't have to be in that format, it could just be adopted as a standalone policy of itself, but that's fine, neither here nor there, it doesn't, no harm, no foul, one way or the other. So there is a proposed ordinance setting forth a policy by which you would evaluate an application to determine its compliance with the comprehensive plan, and then an actual amendment to the comprehensive plan that sets forth the general parameters of what the county is looking for. I can tell you that the ordinance that sets forth the policy is effectively the same ordinance that was originally adopted, it just changes references from ordinance to policy. There's no substantive changes, everything stays in place the way that it was, it's just considered part of a policy evaluation process rather than a rule. If you have any questions for me, I'm here to answer them. Otherwise, I would ask that both matters be set for public hearing.
Question? Mr. Earl? All right, so we'll set that for public hearing. What did you say?
June 12th.
June 12th?
Yes.
Certain time? Six o'clock.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
All vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And I.
And I.
And I also. And that will cover now the consideration of the amendment to the comprehensive plan and everything else that's got off.
Yes, I would recommend it be two separate public hearings.
Okay. Good catch.
So Brandon, you made the motion to schedule the public hearing to amend and reenact the solar ordinance. I will make the motion, schedule the public hearing, amendment to the comprehensive plan regarding Chapter 11 landing.
I'll second that.
Aye.
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 And I.
And I vote aye also. All right, that takes care of that then. And the next thing, we got the ARPA request. Can we wait on that till executive session?
First.
Okay.
Do that to you, but I have.
Okay.
Thanks, no. You have four requests, and two on your list are credits and unused requests so far. First one is a utility vehicle that the recreation department is asking for. There is a request from Mr. Murphy following that. They're using the zero-turn lowers now for carting equipment, dragging the fields, and he's requesting a small utility vehicle instead. Want to vote on them all at once? I'll go these two. Transfer state for the yard truck, we're getting more information on that, so we'd like to pull that request.
Yeah, I'll chime in on this, if you don't mind. I'm not saying that's a good expenditure or not good expenditure, I just don't think we know enough yet. So if we can pull that one out for later action, we may find that it's the best purchase we can make, I would rather pursue some repair discussion opposed to replacing. Staff is asking that we kind of pull that one aside.
That's the reason I wanted to mention about maybe an executive session, because I did a little research on that one myself, and it made us be something simple. And I did find somebody today that was willing to check it out at a reasonable price.
We can come back to it at the next meeting. I just, I could.
Yeah, we're in the same boat on that one.
The next one is for the child advocacy center. Two weeks ago, it sustained some flood damage, and we called an insurance, it's been remediated. She's now asking for a meeting, I believe it's happening on Wednesday, to discuss what may need to happen to the center so that further flood damage doesn't occur. So we don't know exactly what that is now, but we'd like to appropriate in the ARPA funds at least $5,000 to start, so whatever they decide on Wednesday with Tim, and Donna, Ronald, and people who are in the center.
When the flooding damage occurred, we, insurance carrier, when they made those repairs, as you know, if you leave water standing cold, so that's being addressed. As it was explained to me, a significant part of the problem is the drain, as Ms. Jones said, kind of sits in a valley, and everything runs right down on it, which is what drains are supposed to be. But an awning would kind of separate that flow a little bit more power. I'd like to take up, that's the basis.
Where was that at?
Pardon?
Where was that at?
The child development center that's part of the.
The adult education building is there, workforce building next to the motel.
Okay.
On Wilridge Street.
Yeah, I know. Great reason, I was asking, EDA had some, like, thicket grants going around here a while back, then I wonder if that would apply to that?
It may, I think, the facade grants are generally site improvement aesthetically. But we can certainly look at that. I'd rather, if we have to go ahead and spend the five, you don't know when the next rainstorm comes, we've got the whole problem again. I think staff's inclination, go ahead and try to dawn it, try to.
Okay. I can do that, still apply for the grant?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
And the fourth one is for the employee self-service time. Donna and I reached out to RDA, the company we use right now, and what we had first received an estimate for, which we have ARPA funds set aside already, an amount of about $15,000, that was just for employees to go in either at the time they come into work or after the fact. This would allow us to treat it more like a time clock with a geolocation set to it so those services do cost more than we originally anticipated. And if you still want that functionality, it's going to cost another $4250 in the first year, and then that much in the second year.
Comments on that one?
Well, I mean, personally, what I was looking for when we first started talking about this was as simple as just a time clock, because now they're turning in their time sheets, right?
Correct, right, now they're turning in time sheets at the, at the end of the month.
Which nothing's true. Now, anybody can swipe a card for somebody else if they got a buddy, but, you know, on a time sheet, they can write anything they want to, but on a clock, they have to punch it. Now, we can buy those staples for a couple hundred bucks, and they have, you know, whoever the department manager is, turns them in to them.
What we like about this, when you punch that time, it goes into our payrolls. Nobody's sitting down and having to eat those, have to collect those cards, turn around and eat those cards. So if I'm there, I'm going to automatically just punch in that morning when I come in. And with the geolocation, we can, we can look at it that I'm not sitting over parties punching in, I'm actually at work.
Financially, do you think it's broad as it is long?
I think it is as far as Lori's time and taking the time to put all that, having to eat all that in. It's our hope that the, once we do this for the county, that the other offices, the constitutional officers, will see this, and they too will go on this, and it will be for our part-time and full-time employees. So it will save all that money, which is a couple days a month.
It don't run cost anymore to add those other departments and constitutional offices.
Just not going back to where they could punch in on a cellphone, though, is it?
It'll punch in on a cellphone, but they have to, we can see where they were when they punched in, and that's what the geolocation.
Was one thing we was trying to get away from, though.
But that, you know, they already have cell phones.
That Myrtle Beach.
Yeah.
We'll be able to see that you're punching in while you're at Myrtle Beach.
Well, I guess we, I guess we can try it. If we don't like it, it don't work, we can.
One more question.
Go ahead.
If we're going to do that, though, I mean, the geolocation, will there be somebody that will spontaneously just check?
It's going to come up on mine and Lori's grant. We'll have a log in that we'll be able to see.
All right.
And I believe information will also go to the department head for the, who he oversees, and they'll be able to prove that, and the department heads will be approved at the administration.
And if it doesn't work, we'll just.
Something else. Any questions? That one good. All right. Do we need a vote on that, or is it?
You had two.
Motion.
You had something to be voted on.
You had the one on the.
The other thing, the following two are just credits to the, what's been approved in the past that we will not spend.
I would say that recreation vehicle, I hate to spend the money, but that could be very useful, also shared with tourism and others.
Yeah. And I read it too, and it, where right now, they were using lawnmowers to drag the fields, and dust was eating up everything on them and everything else. It sounded like it'd be a good thing there, if they can get a decent one for that price. All right, so do we need a vote on that one, or is that one we've already approved?
You would need a motion, I would recommend a motion to approve these items with the exception of the number two item, the transfer.
Okay.
I think a universal motion to the others.
All right, I'll make that motion, but the exception of the one you mentioned.
Yeah. Second.
I'll second.
Vote?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye also. All right, now, did we need a vote on that time card thing since it was changing the dollar amount, or?
That's already on the sheet.
It looks like the next thing, then, if we got that, is the administrator's report.
Yes, sir, I've got a couple items I want to bring to your attention. Best thing I saw today, the chef and I were able to see this, a young lady named Pam Rohr was named today the top public health nurse in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. She worked for West Piedmont, the PDH section of West Piedmont. It was really nice to see statewide officials here make that presentation for her. They read what she does, I got tired listening, because she does everything, apparently. But just, it's really nice to see recognition come to folks who are perhaps outside the Crescent Bridge, Washington, for folks to show up physically here. I kind of thought about maybe we could bring her in for some sort of resolution, but I got the impression from talking to her today, she does not want any of it whatsoever, because it cuts into her works. So, but I wanted to get that out there, it was really cool to see. I took part in a meeting last week with Dr. Wood and some members of his school board, along with Lori and Donna. Thought that meeting went very well. Simmons was in there, Mr. Kendrick was there. It was very collegial, and I think that's good, because these are the two biggest boards that have the most impact. Everybody working well together. We still have questions about state budget's arrival, could be as late as the third week of June. Last I heard was that they wanted to get past the primaries that are scheduled for June the 20th, to get past that, move forward with whatever they want to do. I think both the House budget and the Senate budget, and Dr. Wood can correct me if I'm wrong, I think both of those have a 7% raise in, instead of the standard, it's said to be the 5% raise. So they want to have that in their back pocket, and five, and be ready to react to that. Commonwealth Transportation Board will hold a public input session on the six-year plan for the Salem district. That's on Tuesday, May 16th, at Salem Civic Center. We can submit comments electronically. We can send those. I had a meeting with Kristi Everly from the West Piedmont Planning District Commission. They have been sensational stepping in to help, not only me try to figure out what's going on, but also move forward while Sean Atkins of West Piedmont offered her services to help us. She is invaluable, I really enjoy that. She told me that we already have, she's already working on six different grants for us, which is pretty extraordinary considering that she doesn't work for us. Ms. Jones and I participated in a Zoom meeting regarding the opioid abatement authority. As you know, localities are getting an allocation from that. At some point, we'll probably come to you with permission to apply for a planning grant, just to see what we don't know. I think it's very important for this issue to spend the money the best ways we can, but have a plan how to do, hope to move forward with that in the next couple of months. As you know, next Monday, the Berkeley group will be here at 5:00 to begin its process of hiring your next administrator. We have now that that meeting will be in closed session. Traditionally, when Berkeley comes in for those meetings, they meet only with the board of supervisors, staff people in the room. I will be in the room, because I'm a staff member to Berkeley, but it is their preference that it be just for the elected officials to kind of kick off that whole thing. That's all I have, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Anybody else having a committee meeting?
I'm at, we met with the school board during a budget, and that went very well.
Good.
Pretty promising, both sides, I think.
Felt good about that.
I had a meeting with social services, and I also went to the day of prayer the other day.
I was aiming to go to that, and I missed it. Mr. Earl? Mr. Perry?
Also, the Planning Commission has met twice since our last board meeting here. The first one was a work group, continue working on the comprehensive plan. I think they're about three years ahead of schedule on the next one, so very excited about that with current relevant updates, so I think they're anxious to out with the old and in with the new and improved. So I missed the second Planning Commission meeting, but that was the, they had the public comment on the land usage and the solar ordinance, and I understand is that went very well. There was a E911 committee meeting where they discussed the Surrey County Towers and there's some issues with that, so that they're trying to work through and hammer through. And then there's another meeting on Wednesday, they're going to continue with that. And then also the ICD Heart Park in Woolwine, they had the ribbon cutting ceremony, that went wonderful, a lot of committees, a lot of regional groups there interested in our beautiful park up there in Woolwine. And a lot of helping hands to grow and improve and do great and wonderful things, so more to come.
And all I had was the meeting that me and Brandon had with the school board, and was supposed to have been a West Piedmont planning, just a regular committee meeting, but we was out of town, so we missed that one and missed the PSA. But the PSA didn't have enough of a quorum, so they rescheduled this week, and I'll still get to go to that one. And I think that's all I had. So I reckon we go into closed meeting. Have you got anything to read?
So pursuant to section, I make a motion to enter into closed meeting pursuant to section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia. I move that we enter into closed meeting for the limited purposes of discussing the appointment of specific individuals to the Southern Area Agency on Aging, Patrick Henry Community College, Economic Development Authority, Department of Social Services, and the West Piedmont Planning District Commission, and also to discuss the policy and personnel as pursuant to subsection A1.
A second?
Aye.
And?
Aye.
And I.
Out between cops?
I too.
That goes unanimously, so we go into executive session.